Yeah, it's a.
I've already read it.
Yeah?
Yep, about five years ago.
Okay, we're on.
That is there.
Oh, where's my script? You never gave it to me.
It's in your book.
Oh, you did. I thought you just made a copy.
No, the script that I get is for the workshop.
Oh.
Sorry. Good morning. This is the regular school board meeting for June 10th, 2014, and it's now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Neese?
Here.
Dr. Krupp?
Here.
Dr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Ziegler?
He'll be late. Michelle Irwin, Director of Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Irwin?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Bingley?
Thank you, Ms. Henderson and members of the board. On the published agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one presentation, 23 consent items not previously submitted for information, four consent items previously submitted for information, one action item, and six information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There are additions to administrative staff recommendations, item A6, and three consent revisions, item F18, reapportment nominations of annual contract teachers for 2014-15, item F19, instructional staff recommendations, and item F30, Palm Bay High School Law Academy and Media Center HVAC upgrade.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve?
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Neese, seconded by Dr. Murray. Are there any questions?
Nope.
Let's vote. Oops, I better shut my phone off. Well, I voted, and it didn't come up with the results.
Is it because Andy's absent? Do you have to click absent for Andy, I think?
Voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And it passes four to zero. Dr. Bingley, are there any administrative staff recommendations this morning?
Yes, Ms. Henderson, there is one transfer, two reclassification transfers, and one resignation to accept.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Neese, seconded by Dr. Krupp. Are there any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? It passes four to zero. That brings us to the recognition of visitors and awards. Dr. Bingley?
There are no recognition items this morning.
Are there any resolutions and proclamations?
There are actually no resolutions or proclamations on today's agenda.
Wow. Next is the presentation portion.
There is one brief presentation this morning to provide the board and the public with a brief update, a budget update. Judy Preston, Associate Superintendent of Financial Services, will be presenting, and I will go down there and speak to a couple issues in the presentation as well.
Good morning. As the board is aware, at the May 13th board meeting session had just ended about 10 days earlier, and I gave you a very brief update. Superintendent asked that I follow up on it, since it will still be about two and a half weeks until we have our budget workshop. So, the one main thing, as you'll see, that as I go through the presentation, that I wanted to update you on, the fact that we have received an estimate on our tax role. This particular slide, the top part of it, the part that's in black, is the part that I had shared with you on May 13th, just as a reminder, in the fact that we had been using a much more aggressive number than what the state had in terms of our estimated tax role. The state had hovered somewhere around four, four and a half, but in residing for the number they would use for the coming year, they used an increase of 4.7 percent, and that's what's embedded into the current FEFP calculation. We, however, had used a positive 7 percent. Actually, we had rounded down on this particular one. The reason for the discrepancy is we knew the Florida Power and Light Plant would be coming online. In conversations with the property appraiser, they were a little uncertain about actually what the number would be as it came online because of some intangibles, and so we decided that what we would do is we would round down. Our number had hovered around, somewhere around 7.4 percent in reality. The red part at the bottom of the slide, though, is something that I've added. We received a preliminary estimate from the property appraiser as of the end of May, and it shows a growth of actually 8.49 percent, or eight and a half percent. So, we were definitely okay in using our 7 percent increase. I would remind the board, of course, that we won't get the final certified value until July 1. Now, although the property appraiser has usually been very diligent on a couple of fronts, number one, they're usually very accurate. Usually, it's within 60, 70, 80 million dollars in terms of the grand total, and I know that that seems like a lot of money, but it is a relatively small percentage. But the other thing is, they've been very diligent in trying to get it to us a few days in advance of July 1. I'm not sure that we'll have it in hand when we have our budget workshop on, excuse me, the previous Thursday. July 1 falls on a Tuesday, so I'm not sure we'll have it in time for the workshop on the previous Thursday. But I'll remind the board, last year, after I had given the presentation, and we were still in the workshop mode of talking about strategic planning, it came in, so I was able to update you at the meeting. So, that may very well happen. Just to drive home the point of what we had been using, this is one of the bar graphs that the superintendent has been using in his presentation, that I think he's now done like 88 times, and it's been used in a number of other venues. But in the out-years, what we had done is we had used for 14-15, a 7 percent growth, and then years beyond that, we had used four each and every year. We will be going back and updating this. The thing is, as I said, the preliminary estimate shows eight and a half, but we had used seven in the most immediate coming year, so we weren't really that far off. Certainly, much better shape than what the state had forecasted, and you've heard the superintendent say it, I'm sure, more than once. We were much more aggressive in our forecast than what the state had done, because they were using basically, in the four and a half percent range, little more, little less, for the last couple of years, and they only used 3 percent in the out-years, whereas we have used the four. So, what does that mean? What does the tax role growth really mean? What I've done is I've broken it down into the different areas to hopefully make it a little clearer to our public and the people who are in the audience. First of all, from a capital budget perspective, as the board is well aware, capital is the one that is most easily for our public to understand, because as the tax role grows, you do generate more money locally, and you get to keep it. As the tax role declines, you generate less money locally, and you have to deal with that. There isn't any equalization on the capital side of the budget. So, what I have said is the tax proceeds will definitely increase based on the one and a half mils that we'll be proposing for the board to continue to adopt. That was originally estimated to go up 7 percent, or 2.9 million. In reality, if that estimated tax role comes in at eight and a half percent growth, then it will actually generate additional 3.5 million. So, you've got about a $600,000 growth that we had not planned on. I want to emphasize again that the bar graph had already estimated the growth of the 2.9 million. It had already included that 7 percent growth and our projections of how we were going to use the capital money in the out-years. What it had not forecasted was that it grew a little bit more than what we had anticipated. But again, a growth of about 600,000, assuming the eight and a half percent, is the correct number that comes in as a certified value. On the operating budget, though, it's a little different. First of all, the tax proceeds will actually increase based on the required local effort and the discretionary millages, the other two kinds of millages that the board will be looking at this summer during our budget process. We do not forecast any significant increase overall in those revenues. And I know people say to me, "Well, how can that be? You just talked about the fact that the tax role's growing. You're going to generate a little bit more money on the capital side. Why aren't you going to generate more money on the operating side?" It all has to do with the equalization formula that the board is, you know, familiar with. It would be great that as the tax role grew, we'd be able to keep the money and be the recipient of that, but unfortunately, that's not the way it works. The last two bullets on this slide, I've broken down the two different kinds of millage to hopefully make it a little bit more explanatory and easy for our public to understand. As for the RLE, the Required Local Effort, as the board knows, that's the one that usually comprises about 70 percent of all the millage that you levy. The deal is here, in the equalization of the funding formula, the state addresses what is the ability for any local school district to pay locally off of their tax role, and then the state kicks in the rest. Well, the relationship and the mix can vary from year to year. What will happen in this case, our first calculation came out in May, when the legislature had adopted their budget, what will happen in essence is, now that our tax role has grown, they're going to say, "You have the ability to raise more money locally, so we're going to give you less state money." I don't have any way of being able to calculate this. I tell the board this year after year. I wish I could, but because of the way the funding formula is structured in the state, you have to have all 67 districts, you have to have all of their tax rolls together at one point, and then the state runs everybody through a recalculation. I don't know what it'll end up being. Could we net out a little bit of extra money? We possibly could. I would say that, you know, if I had to guesstimate, I would say definitely it would only just be a few hundred thousand dollars. Whereas, if you were able to calculate both the required local effort and the discretionary together and get to keep all the money, you'd be sitting at almost an additional 14 million. But because of the way the equalization of the formula works, it doesn't work that way, and now, since our tax role has grown, they are going to say, "You can come up with more money locally, so we're going to give you less state money." The last bullet is about the discretionary millage. This is that .748 millage. It's not really discretionary, as the board is fully aware, because if you don't levy that, you're not considered to be fully participating in the funding formula, per se. In this particular case, the board is very aware, we have been consistently ranking below the state average, when you look at how much we can generate on a per-student basis. And for all the districts that are below the state average, the state implemented a few years ago something called the compression adjustment, and they give us enough dollars to raise us up to the state average. All right? You're below the state average, they give you enough money to bring you up to the state average. Well, guess what? We're likely to be closer to the state average now than we were, so they will reduce our compression. Now, without knowing what any other school district, again, has for their tax role at this point in time, the superintendent asked me a couple of weeks ago, "So Judy, what does that mean? What does that mean?" And I said, "Well, if I had to tell you right now, it's probably going to be almost an even swap. If everybody else in the state stayed the same, and their tax role did not change at all from the original forecast, and ours did, we would certainly move closer to the state average, which is right at $400 per student. We'd move closer. They'd take away almost an equal amount of compression, and we ended up being a $67 difference." Now, don't wed that number in place, though, because again, everybody's tax role is going to have changed, and that means the state average is going to have changed, so we're looking for a number right now that I don't know what that number is.
Now, the 67 per student.
No, it was a total 67. Good point, Dr. Bingley. It was a total.
Now, the 67 per student.
It was a $67 difference total in what we would generate locally and what the state would reduce us by. So, yeah, it's not a panacea. That's why that red line is right at the middle of the slide. No significant increase in revenue is expected. I'm hoping there's no decrease, because I'm hoping there's no proration, but a few times in the last few years, on that second calculation that comes out at the middle of July, there has been a proration. But typically, over time, you can see that there is a slight change, but it's very slight. Again, it's nothing anywhere close to what it would be if we had generated it right off of the millage. In terms of the impact on that required local effort millage, again, as I said earlier, that usually comprises about 70 percent of the total millage that the board takes action on. The board is, of course, required by law to levy that. It will definitely be going down. I don't know by how much. I had shared with you at the May 13th meeting that it was already forecasted to go down almost two tenths of a mil, but again, you are required to levy the lower millage. You won't be able to do anything differently. I just don't know what that final number will be. And that number, again, will not be available until the second calculation comes out in The slide that I gave you at the May 13th board meeting was this one exactly. This was just simply starting you again, as a reminder, that the new money coming in was forecasted to be 13.1 million, taking off the categoricals and ultimately the retirement required increase for employers down at the bottom. What you can see is basically that dropped us to 8.4 million. I will tell you, there are some questions about some of these items, just as I had alluded to you on May 13th. The only thing that we have a little bit more information about is the one that is the new categorical right in the very middle of the digital classroom. We are going to have to submit a plan, as I had indicated to you. Guidelines will not be available until the first part of August. The plans will be due from the district the first part of October, and they're going to hold the money until then. They're going to hold the money until we submit a plan. This slide is also one that came from the May 13th meeting, and really, you know, everything is still in process at this point with lots of discussion. Finance officers will be meeting for our state conference next week. We're sure that some of these things will probably come to light, but the timing is just not right on a couple of these, and I know that the superintendent, I'm going to turn it over to him, because he has some comments he wants to make.
I do, and I can't say that we are going to bring you exact clarity on any of these. However, we can tell you a little more information. First of all, as you know, the state went from 100 lowest-performing elementary schools, and again, that is in reading only, to 300. There's a price tag if one of your schools shows up on that list, and it's fairly an unfunded mandate, as you know. We didn't have any in the lowest 100 list. Last year, two of our schools would have been in the lowest 300, Gulfview and Endeavor. But what we can tell you is both of those showed increases in their preliminary FCAT endeavor significant. So, what we don't know is the learning gain, which is the other half of that. But intuitively, you would assume if they went up, and both did in reading, it's unfortunate, because Gulfview went up significantly in math. They went up pretty, a pretty nice amount in reading, but it's only reading they calculate. But the reality, and the state stayed relatively flat. So, if those schools increased, and if intuitively you would assume their learning gains would also increase, when the state really didn't see that, there's at least some reason to believe that we might be able to avoid any school on the lowest 300, which would be, you know, a good thing for us. I can't tell you that, but at least there's reason to believe that that might not affect us. We really cannot give you a lot of information on the vouchers or, you know, change of enrollment. In dual enrollment, we do need to remind the board and the public, as we continue to engage in dialogue with Eastern Florida State College, we are certainly reducing the number of sections of kids that will be taking dual enrollment. If we are going to stay pat on the million six, which we already have budgeted, then by design, many of those courses are not going to be offered anymore. Along with that, there's been an increase in kind of the criteria that kids have to demonstrate to be able to move into dual enrollment. But the reality is, if they are not in dual enrollment, they are in fact in courses in our schools. What effect that has on the need to have additional staffing in our schools, we really won't know that until August, because they come back piecemeal into schools, we give out FTE, or we give out our PAR based on the kids that are coming in in the summer. What we can tell you, well, let me, let me go to the next one. On the plus side, there was a bump in industry certification. As you know, we are a state leader in industry certification. We are one of the best in the state. You've already heard information that we paid $244,000 last year for industry certification tests, and our kids generated over $800,000 of return based on their success rate. If I remember, if you remember, last year, we had the highest participation ever in industry certification and the highest pass percentage ever. We drove it up to 76 percent. That was a huge gain for us. Now, most of that money goes, gets sunk right back into the CTE programs. Some of it went right back into teachers' pockets, because there is a required bonus for teachers who have, whose children have success, students have success. But there is an 80/20 reflected in the legislation that says you can take 20 percent of that and use that to support the operating budget. We have typically not done that, as we've shared with you. We have put that back into CTE programs. There's a reason why we keep being better than everybody else. We invest in training, we invest in, our kids use some of the best equipment in our CTE programs that are out there. You know, when our kids are having a 65 percent success rate in a SolidWorks, it's because they're out there using SolidWorks with 3D printers, and those are things that are very valuable. My point is, we could use potentially some of that 20 percent to offset whatever might be a cost for teaching units at the secondary level. What I think I'm comfortable in telling you is that we don't believe any additional staffing at the secondary level would exceed a half a million dollars. We hope it's less, but you really have to find out where are the kids coming back? What is the staffing that exists at those schools? What are the courses they're going back into? But we need to at least say that we think that we would not see a hit to that new money of more than a half million dollars. And that would be a half million dollars in the form of additional teaching units at the secondary school level to account for the kids that are coming back. It would cost much more if all of those sections were in Eastern Florida State based on legislated tuition requirements. But we need to at least say that we think there's going to be some, but don't think it will be over a half million. And that's really the best clarity that I can give you at this point on that issue.
Okay. Dr. Murray?
I have a question on the dual enrollment. Will we be reducing the programs for those students who are already in that program? And if so, that could prevent them from earning degrees that they were on track to earn, and I find that unacceptable.
No, we're, we are actually, we absolutely are looking at that, and what we're maintaining, I think, Ms. Van Meter, if you want to come up and define this, but she and I have been engaged in that very discussion. And so, what we're maintaining are those, those courses, in fact, that lead kids to that AA degree and program complete there. But we had a litany of other courses that students could take from an elective standpoint. Those are the ones that are primarily being reduced. So, Dr. Murray, we're very in touch with the fact that our kids have had great success in that program. We certainly don't want to pull the rug out from young people who are in that pipeline right now.
Another question along that line. Any discussion on giving parents the option to go ahead and pay the tuition?
I don't think that's allowed by law, but I'm going to allow Ms. Van Meter to speak to that.
It is, it is not allowed. They cannot pay the tuition. We have to do that. And what we're looking at, of course, is in the articulation agreement, it absolutely says that what they take will lead to some kind of certification or some kind of program completion, so that's where we're focusing on, because in the past, we have not put that much emphasis on the end result, and that's the direction we're moving in this year, that they will have some kind of completion of a program or a degree.
Thank you.
I have a question. You made the statement, Dr. Bingley, that you wouldn't know how many kids would be back until August? And I guess, wouldn't they either now have to be signing up for BCC or classes in Brevard Public Schools? And why wouldn't we know that? Because if I'm not allowing my kid, or you're not allowing my kid to go to BCC, then you should know that they're in one of our high schools. Yes?
Well, actually, you know, we are redoing the articulation agreement right this month with Eastern Florida, and in the past, we did not, we weren't as strict with the PERT testing or some of the requirements to get into certain classes, and now the articulation agreement is more directly in line with statute. So, that will eliminate some of our children who may have registered, not for a particular class, but just what their schedule says now is dual enrollment. And they have not yet gone through the process of registering with the college. They just have indicated their desire to take one or two dual enrollment classes. After they take the PERT test, they may not have the test scores to move forward, and they'll have to come back and make a selection back in their school.
When is that test?
I don't think it's a specific date. It's rolling. It can be done at the schools.
So, we...
The PERT test is a computer test that they take in order to qualify for college readiness and what courses they're allowed to take at the college.
Well, I guess from a district perspective, why wouldn't we be a little more proactive and have them take it by a certain time so that we could better schedule our classes and understand where we're going to be in August? Or am I missing something?
No, the issue is that in the past, we have not had in the articulation agreement certain levels of performance on the PERT. The new articulation agreement does address that, so that will throw some of our students into a state of flux, and they'll have to make other choices.
But I think I need, if I could, I think, I think the fundamental, I think the fundamental part of your question, Ms. Henderson, is our high school principals have been given, the young people for whom we eliminated the coursework at dual enrollment, those are now already back, and they're being scheduled. So, again, you have to see what that does. Some will go into elective coursework that we really don't need to add additional complement. Others, that may not be the case. So, they do know, correct, in the case where, okay, those young people will not be getting this course, whether it be culinary arts or whatever, that's now in your high school. They have been engaging in scheduling with the knowledge of those kids are now in their, in their complement. And, you know, we're not hearing huge outcry... And, you know, we're not hearing huge outcry, but, but we may need to plug strategically some additional complement in.
Mr. Ziegler?
I'm a little bit confused here as to timing, which is what Mrs. Henderson, I think, was alluding to, is that you're saying because of the tightening up of the agreement, students are going to have to show their performance capability in order to enroll. But now you're saying that they don't take the test until they come back to school? No? Okay, that's what I thought you were saying. Because my also, the understanding was, one of the reasons we were very pro starting early was because that, then we align better with dual enrollment, and we're starting a little late. So if we, this all needs to be known ahead of time, or they won't even be able to engage in a course for the, for the starting semester. So do the students know, or will we be notifying them somehow that they need to take this? Either come into the schools or take it online sometime prior to the beginning of school?
They are, their guidance counselors will be working with them. What has happened is, as we cull down that list, we're working with the guidance counselors and the folks, the registrars at East Florida. And there's some bantering back. You know, there's some that they want our kids to be allowed to take, and there's some that do not fit into the new articulation agreement. That's the piece that we're working on with them at this time.
So you still don't have a, a final agreement with them?
It's being, it's being finalized as we speak.
So, but because of that, we're kind of putting some of these kids in a situation where they really don't know where they're going, based on whether or not they're going to have the course available at BCC or not.
The only thing I can say...
Or, wait a minute, or the fact that they haven't taken, another group of kids may not have taken the tests to even qualify for it. Am I...
The process, Ms. Henderson, is truthfully, when they register for class in April, they register to take dual enrollment. They don't make their selection of what dual enrollment classes they're going to take at that time. They work with the counselors and with the BCC, East Florida counselors over the summer when they know when their high school schedule is offering their classes, because a lot of that depends on when they have that opening. So what, for example, via our high school, what their schedule will look like, maybe first and second period is not an option for them to not be on campus, and it might be a night course that they might select to take. So it's meshing those two schedules together, and that's what they're in the process of doing. Until the high school schedule is pretty much finalized and the student knows where their openings are for what they can then select at BCC, Eastern Florida State College, that's the process they're in at this time. And they may find that the courses that they hope to take do not fit into their schedule, and then they come back and make another selection at the college. Based on their GPA at the end of this semester that they just finished, there will be some courses that they won't qualify for. They'll have to revisit their selection at that time also. This is just, it's, it's not a constant date. It's something that they work on throughout the summer with their guidance counselors.
Okay, my, I just have, my final question is, is this going to be like this from this day forward, or is this an anomaly because we're making changes this year?
The changes to the PERT testing and the culling of the classes, that is something that we've never done before, so that's unique to this year.
So I can expect next year for us to be better prepared?
Next year, you'll have a better idea. It, it's always fluid. Depending on where the child finishes each semester and what their GPA is, that's what allows them to qualify for a course or a program. So if they're not at a certain level, then they have to revisit what their selections will be. That will change. That, that's always, students that enroll for early admissions, again, it's all dependent on what their GPA is at the conclusion of their 11th year. And there are students who in April will say they're going to do early admissions, they don't have the GPA, and they have to come back and revisit their seven-period day. It's very different.
Two, two quick questions. One of which, you mentioned night classes. And I thought that we were going to limit students to, because of seven periods, if they take a, if they take a dual enrollment or virtual, they have to eliminate one of those periods. So if they take a night class, that means they're not in the school, say, one of the periods during the day?
And that is correct.
Just wanted to clarify that. And the other is, is best-case scenario of finishing this articulation agreement with EFSC, what is the window that these students will have to take the test that they need to take to determine whether they could go to dual enrollment? Is there, is it a, is it a one month, is it a week? Is, what's that window going to be?
You know, we adjust our guidance counselors so they work 10 or 11 months. So during the summer, someone is there, and they can take the test at that time. It's not a window. It's an open opportunity for them to come in.
It's got to be a window between completing the agreement and beginning of school as a minimum.
That is true. That is true.
Why are we, okay, Dr. Murray? And then Dr. Krup.
A couple, a couple things that don't make sense to me. I would think that for fall admission, they would be taking the test the previous spring, and that we would have a handle on that. And in terms of GPA, to, to determine whether they will continue or qualify, seems to me like we would be able to look at the history of that student. You know, if a student is a 4.0, 3.5-plus, the likelihood of their GPA falling below a level to have dual enrollment would be, I would think, very unlikely. So I would think that we could do some analyses that would project and be very, very accurate so that we could work ahead of the current timeline that we're operating under. I mean, no, no one that I know of in higher ed, no one waits until just a matter of weeks before a semester starts, before they're taking any, any prereq exams to get into the institution. Those are all done well in advance. You know, I know that we have dual enrollment students right now that know what their fall schedule is already. They are, they actually know what their spring schedule's going to be. So if, if one or two can do that, I would think that the whole program would be administered in a way that, that it would be, I realize you're going to always have some exceptions, but it seems to me like we could be, have a lot more structure and, and the ability to predict our enrollment so that the board would know where they would stand when we ask questions like this.
And Dr. Murray, it is true, that's typically where we are. But in this case, we are finishing up school last week. They have not yet received their report cards. So as far as their GPA, they have, their intention is they'll have registered on their schedule, dual enrollment for courses, but they will not have finalized those until the school has finalized their schedule, and then they can blend the two together. That's, that's just where they are.
I understand that. I mean, I understand the, the high school, you know, the, the mixing that together. But what I'm concerned with is, if I heard correctly earlier, the entrance exam is going to be offered this summer, and, and that should have been done a long time ago.
As soon as a child indicates that they are. But if a child does not, did not meet the score, they'll, they, they can take it two times in their high school career. And so depending on where their GPA is, what their test scores are, that determines what courses or what programs they can register for.
You're dancing around it, Cindy. What I'm saying is that, I understand the GPA thing. I understand the timeliness of that and the timing of it. What I'm saying is those entrance exams should be taken in the fall and spring semester of the regular school year. They should not be taken in the summer. And, and that would be something that we could establish here at the local level even. I would think that, you know, we, we need to know this information well ahead of time. Don't be taking the exams in June and July for August admission because we, you know, it just doesn't work that way. And, and that, no matter the GPA, they need to have those, that entrance exam, I would think, well, in advance.
But in this case, what came first, you know, the chicken or the egg? Did we even know that we were going to have to do this prior to renegotiating this contract? So I, I guess this was a bit of a surprise that this was going to have to happen. So this time around, it's not possible, which then leads to the question, can we ease up on the requirement so that we don't mess with a lot of students' schedules and make, create a tremendous amount of extra work for staff? Going forward, the point is extremely appropriate that they take this early, but clearly, we couldn't do that this time around. So this would go to Mrs. Henderson's statement. This is a bit of an anomaly.
Dr. Krup?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cindy, at graduation for Titusville, we had 39 students with their AA degrees. We, I think we had six or eight at Astronaut and a similar number at Space Coast. Do you have a handle on how many students were involved in dual enrollment last year and what we can project for this year?
I don't have that in front of me, Dr. Krup. I have it down on my desk, predicted numbers for this year, and I can get you all the numbers for last year also. I have that. No. And the last thing...
I didn't hear superintendent's comment. What was that?
He doesn't anticipate a big drop off in the AA degrees that our students earn. And just one other comment, you know, we're always looking at test scores, and some students that don't have to take it will depend on their ACT scores, which don't come in until the spring. So we're always looking at every way we can to help our students qualify. And, and I can tell you that we typically do not make decisions that harm children.
The follow-up question I had, excuse me, Madam Chair. Since the state has changed the rules, so to speak, how is the, the sharing of the FTE, and maybe this is a Judy question, is the college still going to share in the FTE for these students in dual enrollment?
No, remember, now we have to pay the students tuition, and so our students are only allowed to earn FTE for seven courses. And if one of those happens to be dual enrollment, that's part of their seven-period day, we still pay their tuition costs.
And then this leads into the follow-up question with the zero period. If a student is taking zero period plus dual enrollment plus seven other periods, you know, we cap out, I'm sure, somewhere along the line.
Let me make a statement related to your first question, and I'll turn it back over to Cindy. Ours, in terms of the school districts in the state of Florida, were recalibrated to be capped at earning no more than one full FTE on any student. Higher education was not capped. I continue to raise that issue when I go to meetings of my colleagues and when I'm in meetings with the Department of Education, because that is absolutely discriminatory, in my opinion. I hate to use that word, but it is in reference to K-12 system. They capped all of our kids, be it related to dual enrollment or be it related to virtual, so we can earn no more than one FTE, irregardless of when they take the class, if it's in the course of their school day, it's at night, it's in the summer, whatever. But higher ed can still earn more than one FTE on each one of their students.
One final question I have. Cindy, when can we expect a articulation agreement with Eastern Florida in, in our district?
I believe Mrs. Demetriades and Shereen looked in our meeting all day Thursday to put closure on it, and Richard layered their CFO plans on meeting with me as soon as it's completed.
Will, will we be receiving that document anytime, you know, in a rough draft statement or what?
Remember, we had, the articulation agreement that you got last year was a three-year agreement. These are some modifications to that agreement.
I've got one more quick question, since he asked about FTE. I just want to clarify so that, that I understand, everybody understands. When a student enrolls in college and they pay a tuition, that...
No, we pay the tuition.
Whether, whether it be, whether it be they're on their own or whether we do it, does not the college also apply to the state for FTE funding on the backside? Right. So they're getting, so they've always been getting, it's not like they've been doing it completely out of the goodness of their heart, providing dual enrollment at no fee to us. They're getting some sort of funding on the backside directly from the state, from every student that enrolls, whether it be a regular college student or whether it be a high school student in dual enrollment. Now, we're just helping subsidize their expenses through our FTE. I'm curious, can we find out what that funding formula is on the backside and how much they're getting per credit? I guess it would be per credit hour from, I have no idea how that works, but I'd be very interested in finding out what the details are so that we know how much they're getting for our students, and we know how much we're, we're paying for our students, so we know what the total cost is of providing that education at the college.
And that is true. They earn their funding based on the student in the seat, and really, they don't report whether or not it is a high school dual enrollment student, or for them, it's just an East Florida student sitting in that seat.
If I understand, we could actually have the college class in our facility with a college instructor. If we do that, though, we don't have to, do we have to pay for that credit also or not? And if we were to provide the appropriate instructor to teach a college-level course, could we get that back in college FTE funding? Just a wild thought.
Of course not. If we had it on our campus, then we're not paying, we, because it's our teacher. Where we're running into the issue is they have changed their certification agreement with the teachers. So we don't have a lot of teachers that meet their minimum certification issues, which is a master's plus 18 credit hours. And so it's very difficult finding some of our staff members that have all of those additional credits to teach it on our campus and then fill the, fill the class with students.
Okay, I want to get back to my original question. Now, we kind of went off on a path here. But how many kids are you thinking that we're unsure of right now that would either go to dual enrollment or have to come back to our high schools? Are we talking 20? Are we talking 200? Are we talking, I mean, because you're saying you can't get the schedules for our high schools until this is all figured out, whether they take the test and da-da-da-da, all those things come into place. Do we know how many kids we are unsure of at this point?
Mrs. Henderson, I can gather that information, but I will not take a guess at it right now.
Pardon me?
It really varies per school. You know, some of the information I've got has some gaps in it, so I, I don't want to give you that information until I fill in the gaps from some of the schools.
I was just curious because it, it seems to me that this process at this point is going to make it much more difficult for our high schools to do their scheduling.
I'm just going to tell you that this, the scheduling process with the high schools in BCC, East Florida State College, is just been what they do every year. It's, it's waiting till the school year ends, till the semester's over, and then the students come in and start making choices based on the performance, because some of their math, science grades are dependent on what they earned in the high school, onto what classes they can go into. So this is just a process that they're used to working on at this time of the year, once the school year's over.
Okay.
I, I think in answer to your question, because I've asked some of the same questions, and I don't think, as it relates to the PERT, that we have a huge number of kids in limbo. I mean, we, our principals already know the classes that we have said will not be an elective class in dual enrollment anymore. So I don't think there's a huge number in uncertainty that is new as compared to what we've done in years past. But I'll, I'll sum up by saying, you know, we've had a great relationship, Eastern Florida State College, great. We are the leader in the state in dual enrollment, AA degrees. Not by percentage. Dr. Krup, you're exactly right. More of our kids earn AA degrees than in Miami-Dade, than anywhere. Now, I'm going to tell you that I was with a group of superintendents, and I told the governor with the educate, the Senate and House Education Chair in the room, when this world changed in the 11th hour last year, you know, I, I shared with him, we had a great, and many of us had great relationships with our community colleges in this effort to serve kids in a, in a really powerful... to serve kids in a, in a really powerful way. If you set out to purposely harm that relationship, you almost couldn't have done it any better. In the 11th hour, put this kind of legislation in place that pits them, to some degree, one against another, you, you almost couldn't have tried to harm that relationship and done better than you did. That's what I told him. And what I'm telling you is, we have worked very, very hard to preserve the quality relationship. There's some stuff that's happening in other places that's not fun around this. They've ran away from tables in an ugly fashion. We've not done that, and we've tried to focus on, we can't afford all of what this legislation is, but we want to preserve the best of what we think this brings to the young people of this community. And you don't do that in two meetings. So I, you know, they've worked hard to try to make the best we can in a very cooperative way. And I think that's where we'll end up, but the reality is, as we all knew, dual enrollment as we knew it was going to shrink. All we're saying is that it's going to have some effect, but we don't believe it'll be huge, because we've been, been able to be pretty strategic about what courses were eliminated, what, you know, the availability of those courses on our own campuses. And then we have to see what kids come in, like any given year, do they need additional complement, teaching complement, to deal with those numbers of kids? And that's, that's where we are.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No, I know Richard signed up.
Well, I have no list. Where's my list?
Can you go down there and see?
Do we have a list? You, do we have a list for public comment?
No, there's not one over here.
All right. And it's him? Just, I'm just kidding. Mr. Smith, please.
Did we even provide a list?
No, there's no list out. We never provided one.
Then we have to allow.
We have to allow.
Well, I would anyway.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
But there may be other people that would have signed up.
We're, we're good to go. Can't wait to hear from you.
Open it up.
You're not, hang on, hang on.
There it is, yes. Richard Smith, Brevard Federation of Teachers. I come before you today with great news. Happiness ensues, and I want to, I do want to say this in a public way. Dr. Bingley, I thank you very much for the, your work you're doing with the higher education. That is a, I wanted to applaud, but I was afraid I'd be the lone person applauding, but, but thank you for doing that, because that certainly is the right thing to do, and I appreciate my superintendent doing that. We got a grant. We hard, we worked hard on a grant. It was a lot of hours. If those hours were the only result of the grant, it would have been well worth it because of the relationships that were enhanced, the collegiality that has moved forward with senior district staff, and quite frankly, growth in both me and both my vice presidents in, in moving towards collegiality. But $600,000 is a nice additional thing to have along with that, and the money is almost exclusively going to go towards mentor teachers, more experienced teachers, working with mentee teachers who in their first or second year of teaching. I was doing some rough calculations with Ms. Nisi earlier, and I was thinking about this, and this made me smile. $600,000 is a big number, and it's, we're glad and all that. Here's a better number. It's a smaller number, but it's a better number. About 2,000 students are going to benefit from this program. 2,000 students are going to get a brand-new teacher with a pretty intensive time provided with their experienced mentor to really enhance, especially at the beginning of the year, kind of getting the classes organized, getting things started. And so, this grant is, is wonderful. I should mention, the National Education Association is the, providing the grant using member money. And so, when I talk to my members about where does their money go, it goes to this kind of thing, and I'm very proud that here in Brevard, we've gotten this. I want to thank everybody that was involved. I'm not going to try to off-the-cuff get every name, but they know who they are, and I appreciate every one of them. And Dr. Bingley, I appreciate the cooperation your office has extended to us, and all I can say is yahoo.
That is great news. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? I'll ask again. Anybody wish to speak? Come on up. Okay. That's it. Well, thank you again, Mr. Smith. That's great news, great for our teachers, great for our students. Glad to see the collegiality and, and cooperation continuing, and as a district, that's in the best interest of everyone. Thank you. That moves us to the consent agenda. Dr. Bingley?
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. I do want, before I move on, echo that. I mean, it, it has been a great opportunity for us to, to plug something in that we could think can help. When teachers, talk to teachers about teaching, good things happen. We've said that a lot. When they, when they mentor teachers, good things happen, and that, that's just going to, our children will be the beneficiaries. They just will be. I agree with you, Ms. Smith, absolutely. So we're very proud of that, and, so, moving forward, there are 27 items under this category, 23 consent items not previously submitted for information, and four consent items with prior information.
Does any board member wish to pull any items? Dr. Murray?
I just want to make a comment on F-10.
Yes, I'd like to pull F-10.
I've, I've spoken with Mr. Langdorff.
Let's go past the rest and then discuss.
Yes. So Pam, if you could move F-10. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of the items that were pulled for public discussion.
Madam Chair, move.
Seconded.
Moved by Dr. Krupp, seconded by Mrs. Nisi. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Let's vote. Hmm? Oh, yours comes, oh, there it is. And the motion carries five to zero. Okay, Dr. Murray?
I just want to let the board know and the audience, I've actually had quite a bit of discussion with Mr. Langdorff over this issue of lifeguards, and I've also contacted some other organizations such as the Ys, higher ed, and, and other places that rent their pools out, and I have found that our policy actually is what they are doing as well, with the exception that in many cases, not in the public schools so much, but the Ys and higher ed, they even have a life, a separate lifeguard on deck when the instructor is still a lifeguard. And, and talking with a aquatics director, they said that, you know, their thoughts on that are merely that if the person is teaching, they can't be teaching and watching as well. I, I did say to Mark when I was having his, our discussion, that, you know, my experience has been that most of the time, your swimming teachers and phys ed teachers, of course, they have their life-saving and all that certification. It's, it's very common practice, I think, in K-12 for the teacher to serve that dual purpose. You don't see that in other, in outside organizations. And so, to not financially burden the school district, I told him that I could, I could accept that, although the best, the best, obviously, would be to have a lifeguard on deck. But I went on to say that I really feel any outside organization that rents our facility for any reason should in fact have a, have a, have a lifeguard on deck. And I also encouraged him to have dialogue, I think, with Doctors Thetty and, Doctors, Doctor Thetty and soon-to-be Doctor, Doctor Pace almost back there. Sorry about that slip. And in the fact that we need to ensure that all of our people have those certifications up to date, because I had learned that one had expired, so we want to make sure that there's a lot of oversight on that, because I equate that with a teaching license. That's what they do for a living. So with that said, I move to approve this item.
I'll second that.
I have a little discussion here as well. I, I think that sometimes we move to titles rather than what's entitled in it. For example, a lifeguard versus somebody who is water rescue and backboarding and CPR. The skills involved, for me, are just as important as the title. The fact that we need another set of eyes when we already have them there, you know, as a person who's been on the pool decks in Brevard Public Schools for eight or nine years now, I have never seen a problem. In fact, the only problems I've ever seen are from coaches from our schools bringing their kids to swim at the pool unattended. That's a different story, which I already reported eight years ago, before I was a board member. But as a parent of children who do both swimming and diving, I've been on the pool deck, I've never seen an issue. I do believe that lifeguard, you know, we no longer allow people in the pool to just rent the pool. They are certified coaches that come with certain skill set. They are, they must be members of AAU or USA Swimming. Everybody on their teams must be members as well. I think having, if your coaches are already certified and you've got two or three coaches sitting there, or if you have one dive coach who's watching one person at a time, I think hiring another, putting the burden of, of those coaches to hire another, essentially doubling their fees at this time, I, I think is overkill. But that's just my personal opinion, and so for those reasons, I will not be supporting this, but we may vote?
If I may. I would have thought that it was overkill up until several weeks ago, and because of a situation, I agree with Dr. Murray in that there are things that distract those who are supposed to be watching, coaching is one of those. We had a child in Palm Bay, a girl that, that drowned in Palm Bay. Nearly drowned. She, she was not breathing, and it was, it was a six-year-old boy that noticed, because everybody else's eyes were on something else, even though you would think there was plenty of supervision on that deck. It wakes us up to the fact that it is a specific function to watch for safety reasons on a constant basis and not get distracted with coaching or side conversations or whatever. So, and if a coach is doing their job, they should be very closely watching specific people all the time so that they can help them improve their skills, and, and they can't possibly do that and be watching everything else that goes on in the pool. So unfortunately, it's, it's a necessity to have that safety to protect lives and to reduce liability. So I will support it, because I, I think it's, I think it's just good best practices around the pool.
Well, may-
My question is, could there be an amendment such that if the number of people on the pool deck are below a certain number? My concern, I'm thinking, I'm trying to look for a common ground here. It would seem to me that if there were a certain number of people on the pool deck, it would be more important than, say, if there were less than five. I'm just throwing that out for conversation's sake.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. I call for, I call for the question.
Well, at this point, I'll vote no until I have more information then, because I, I'm just asking-
Comment, comment.
I just didn't have a chance to-
May I have a comment?
Point of order.
What, point of order? I just want to say, part of the issue is here, some of the, one of the people in question has expired licenses, and I don't care what the skill set. You have an accident, you get sued, you go into court and your person wasn't certified, I tell you, people, it's not going to fly, right, Mr. Bysslen?
That's a good point.
Well, and I have no problem, that, that is, was exactly my point, Dr. Murray, is that they do need to be certified in, in backboarding, in concussions, and, you know, all the things that are water rescue. I have no problem with that. I have no problem with the people that are on the deck being certified with that. I absolutely agree. I, my point was that I just didn't think that they need more, but that's just me. And it's for Mr. Ziegler, you know, as a swim instructor, and having two children and a pool in my backyard, every time we've had a party at my backyard, I have always, because this is just good safety things, always, and even if I'm at my mom's, who lives on the water, I would tag you and I'd say, "I'm going to the restroom. You're in charge of watching the children." That is your job. You have no phone, you have no nothing else, and your job is to watch the pool. Everyone that is watching this. If you have a pool in your backyard, or you do anything near water, absolutely, you must have at all times somebody watching your children. Period. Got it? That sort of thing wouldn't have happened if, in fact, you know, that had occurred at your part, or their party. I have a little tag that it's a, it's a badge about this big that I will give parents when they're at my house, and I'm going to go cook the hot dogs, and I put it around your neck and say, "This makes you in charge," because that's just what you need to do, because absolutely, the drowning is the silent killer. You don't hear that. So, but, but my point is that, you know, that swim teams are swimming in circles, you know? It's not a, we no longer allow people just rent the pools in a chaotic situation. I really don't care if the person that is doing the life-saving can swim 300 yards into a wild ocean. I don't. What I need the person on the deck to do is not by their title of lifeguard, but by the skill set of being able to save lives. That's all I'm saying. Yes. Mrs. Nisi?
Okay. What I'm going to do, because I, obviously, there's two very passionate sides to this, and when it comes to safety, you always err on the side of caution.
Absolutely.
So at this point, I will, I'm going to vote to support this, but I'm going to make a note in my calendar that I want to, I'm going to gather some data six months from now, see if there's been any, any unforeseen consequences of people being unable to access it, if it's been a fee issue. But when it comes to safety, bottom line is always safety first, so I will support it for that reason only.
Okay. Dr. Murray?
My understanding that the additional fee was very minimal, is there, can anybody address that out there?
I meant to pay a lifeguard.
That's what I'm talking about. It was very minimal. It wasn't, pardon me?
You still have to cover their, their pay or whatever.
Yeah, right. It's still going to be- Do you have that information, just so? The board needs to know what that is, that figure.
Basically double their fee per hour.
More than that.
Oh, yeah, just one second. Five hundred and ten dollars.
For the swimming pool use?
The- Additional lifeguard would cost what?
Okay, hang on, just one second. I'm on the right page. That's why you should read these things before you come here. What Mark was able to do was collect information, as Dr. Murray referred to, some of the outside agencies, that's exactly what he did, and the going rate seemed to be somewhere in around the $8 an hour rate. In fact, that was the median of what he discovered, by some below, some above, but the median was around $8 an hour. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's, any further discussion? Let's vote.
I'm down. What happened?
Just have Pam figure it out.
Just have Pam put yours in. Have Pam vote yes for me.
Yeah, your computer totally died. Well, meeting's over, Andy's computer died.
Yay!
Technically challenged.
Interesting that was your computer.
Okay. Let's do a voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. Motion passes four to one. Oh, nay, sorry. Aye for the nay. Where are we?
No action items. Information agenda.
That brings us to the action agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. There are no action items for you to consider on today's agenda.
That brings us to the information agenda. The information agenda includes items for board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight, Dr. Bingley, or this morning.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. There are six agenda items under the information category this morning.
Does any member wish to discuss anything on the information agenda?
I can't see the information agenda.
Well, let me show it to you.
Since I don't know the password to lock that in.
I don't think...
I don't think there's anything on there that I needed to speak about.
I think we're good.
No, we're good.
I've decided he has nothing to pull. No, I'm just kidding.
Thanks, Mom.
Okay. Are there any staff reports?
Yes, Ms. Henderson and members of the board, we do have one staff report. Item I-43 is to provide information about a student instructional opportunity called the Power Hour. Dr. Mark Mullins, South Area Superintendent, Jane Klein, Central Area Superintendent, and Cindy Van Meter, Associate Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, will provide this report for you this morning.
Good morning again, Ms. Henderson and board members. In early May, Dr. Mullins had submitted a board update to you, introducing you to the idea of the Power Hour pilot, that we are beginning this August at Bayside High School and at O'Gally High. We are afraid that the update might have generated some additional questions that might need to be answered, and that's what brings us here to you this morning. As a result of the Power Hour at Westport High in Ocala, course failures rates dropped, participation in co-curricular increased, discipline referrals declined, and they, and school pride dramatically increased. It was originally developed to expand their lunch period to increase student opportunities for academic success. The majority of their students were eligible for busing and didn't have opportunities to receive academic assistance beyond the normal school day. There was no opportunities for tutoring, no time to make up assignments, to retake tests, all of which at that time contributed to a 37% course failure rate. So, the proposal, students and teachers would have one hour in the middle of the day to eat lunch and participate in a variety of activities. The teachers would still have their duty-free lunch period, and then during the other half of that hour, they would hold office hours, during which time they would offer tutoring, they would sponsor clubs, they would create learning opportunities, or they could provide makeup sessions, and anything else that might contribute to a positive school culture. So, Dr. Mullins would like to share firsthand his experience about his visit to Westport High School.
Good morning, board. I did have the opportunity to accompany Ms. Christine Moore, Principal of Bayside, and Jeremy Solomon, Principal of O'Gally, along with five teachers, teacher leaders from O'Gally, to Westport High School a couple of weeks around April timeframe. What led to the visit was Bayside High had already sent an admin teacher team to the school a couple of weeks prior to our visit, and that team returned with such positive feedback that both Ms. Moore and I wanted to visit the school personally. We arrived in time for the Friday faculty focus meeting at 8:00 a.m. After that meeting, we met with Principal Jane Elsperman, and she shared the journey that Westport High had been on toward the now three years of implementation of their Power Hour. She shared that Westport High had not implemented Power Hour as a turnaround strategy, rather they had already experienced student achievement improvement from being a failing school to earning an A. However, the next step was to find another way to further empower students to take ownership of their learning and continue to move the entire school toward genuine, true mastery-based learning. Facilitating students to have access to teachers for both intervention and enrichment support during the regular school day was the vehicle they pursued. After our discussion with the principal and staff, we experienced firsthand the Power Hour culture at Westport High. Here's a little bit of what we witnessed and experienced. Several hundred students sitting in the cafeteria, socializing responsibly, eating lunch or waiting in the food service line. Another several hundred students sitting around the commons area, again, eating responsibly their lunches and socializing. In one instance, in the commons area, a student was doing a dance-like performance in front of the Performing Arts Academy wing. We walked into the auditorium and witnessed several students facilitating, a couple hundred students signing in to a National Junior Honor Society meeting. Again, all students were impressively collegial and cooperative. What was most impressive is what we experienced as we visited about a dozen classrooms. In a CTE engineering lab, I talked with three students who were discussing their course project and anticipated presentation coming up. In the same class, a teacher was working with another group of students at a lab station on their project, while another team was problem-solving and welcomed Ms. Moore into their discussion. Next, in an AP physics classroom, approximately 18 to 20 students were eating their lunch and engaged in a rather intense discussion about a physics topic in preparation for the AP exam. In a math classroom, a student was at the board facilitating math review problems, while the teacher sat at her desk, supporting the student-led discussion. In the same room, I asked a student in the back why he was there. His reply, "I always come to this class for math help, but the teacher's working with these other students right now, and I'm doing okay." He was polite, responsive, and positive. By the way, this was a class for college readiness, not AP calculus. As we walked through the halls, we witnessed students sitting on the floor, eating their lunch, working on classwork together, and in another classroom, several students were quietly working on what appeared to be makeup assessments. Everywhere we went, students were either responsibly socializing with peers, engaged in academic opportunities, attending a club meeting, or preparing to make their way to a teacher, to meet with team members, or attend a club meeting. Equally as impressive was a campus commons area that was every bit as clean, tidy, and groomed as any one of our own school campuses.
At the end of Westport's first year, student course failure dropped from 3.8% to 0.37%. Student participation in co-curricular activities went from approximately 10% to 60%. Disciplinary referrals were cut in half while their enrollment rose to over 2,500 students. Westport High discovered that by trusting their students to make wise decisions on their own time, they empowered them to be successful. This is what Bayside and O'Gally High are shooting for in 2014 and 15. Both faculties are fully supportive, enthusiastic, and guardedly optimistic. They have overcome hurdles, and we thank Arby Creach in Transportation and Kevin Thornton in Food Service, who've worked collaboratively with us and the school principals for the commitment for Power Hour. Both schools are also engaging their students in renaming Power Hour to meet their school. For example, O'Gally is going to anchor Hour for O'Gally High, and Bayside is working with their students as well. Any questions or comments concerning Power Hour?
I have a couple of questions.
Mrs. Neese?
So, how will this affect the school day? How will it look different for a student coming in this fall as opposed to last year? Will the beginning and end times of school be different, length of class time, and all of that good stuff?
Sure. The two schools that are going to be piloting it will begin their school day at 8:35, as opposed to the 8:45 that has traditionally been the start time, and it ends at 3:31, as opposed to 3:30. That gives them additional minutes to add on to that lunch period, to get a genuine 60 minutes, and the principals have worked extensively with their faculty and students to create buy-in, and there's just overwhelming support to do it because of the anticipated benefit of the program.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, thank you. Okay, there are no additional public presentations unless Mr. Smith wants to come back up. Are there any board reports?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Neese?
Okay, one comment and two questions, so I'll start with the comment. I'm pleased to see a change of registration process, at least at Satellite High. I don't know if other schools are trying different things, but instead of waiting until August to have to go and stand in line at a certain time to fill out a whole bunch of forms, they actually are trying something new this year, where we got our forms all ready before school was out. We get to drop them off in June at our convenience, and then we get a quick pass for August, so that when registration comes, you go right to the end of the line, pick up your schedule, and are done. So, I just want to do a shout-out to Satellite for that, and if there are other schools finding innovative ways to improve registration, just good job for doing that.
I think the shout-out goes to Dr. Thetty.
Is that you, Dr. Thetty, that came up with that? Thank you, Dr. Thetty.
She's been working with a group of principals to get this done, and in my children's school, we actually did it before school was out and sent all the papers back in, and it is a much better process. We are still working towards a better process sometime in the far future, maybe by the time my kids graduate, but, but we are, every year, we're trying to improve it, to make it better for the parents and the students, and we thank you, Dr. Thetty.
Okay, my two questions. Dr. Bingley, when are school grades expected? Because I know at least one of our charter schools that could affect enrollment and stuff in our neighborhood schools, so when are we looking at that?
Ms. Van Meter, we had that conversation earlier today, and I think we're looking at late July. Is that not correct, what were the most recent?
[inaudible].
And I know that Ms. Archer has been in conversation with principal, I believe, at the charter school that you're speaking of, they're crunching numbers. We're very in touch with that issue.
And then, my second question is, is I would just like, as a board request, a follow-up on how the high school credit recovery works. I'm only hearing from people that I know, but for instance, I know a couple of families that signed up at Satellite to do English in this three weeks, and I thought it was a three-week process to get their grade. They were done the first day, and so, I'm trying to figure out how you do credit recovery in one day. And so, if I could get some sort of response on what credit recovery was offered, how students earned that credit, and how they were able to finish in a matter of hours a semester course, that would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Ziegler?
Last night, Dr. Krupp and I attended the Space Coast League of Cities monthly dinner meeting, and they give anybody who wants to speak an opportunity for three minutes, just like we do. And I took the opportunity to ask for input from all of our elected officials and community leaders that were there as to what they would like to see as our school closure analysis process, and whether they had any opinion whatsoever as to whether they felt we needed to get to a point before the ballot in November to name schools or name areas or whatever, and also to let them know that I was informally giving them advanced notice that we do this process on a regular basis, and that I don't want to hear from them that in February, that they were not made aware, or that they didn't have an opportunity, and that they could reach out to us anytime that they want to speak to us about that process. We'd be glad to speak to them. The other thing I want to let you know is that on June 17th at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, Space Coast Association of Realtors is having a forum about the half-cent sales tax. It originally started off as Matt and I was going to do the, you know, the anti-tax position, speaking to their membership, and they asked if we would then also be there to do the, why it is needed, so we can speak to that. Then we found out that Matt and I had asked Scott Ellis to join him in on that, and so, Dr. Bingley and I are going to be at that, it's the 17th, June 17th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Space Coast Area Association of Realtors facility on, I think it's McLeod in Merritt Island, and 10:00 a.m. Once I get a little more formal specifics on it, I can forward that out to Pam, and she can go over to the board, and you could all know about it. I'm very interested to see how that unfolds, because as you all know, Dr. Bingley and I presented to the Republican Men's Club, which was a very hostile environment, and we actually got some recommendation, a recommendation from Scott Ellis on what he felt we needed to do to be successful in the half-cent sales tax, by making sure we outline what the money is going to be used for, and et cetera, et cetera, which we are going to do, and we thought that was a huge improvement over just being criticized. So, next week should be a very interesting forum, and anybody that would like to attend out there, and I hope we get a good complement of our Realtors, because our Realtors are out there in the community, speaking to everybody, and it'll be a great opportunity to understand exactly what's going on, and what our budget is about, and I'd like to get with Judy Preston, because I know some of what that argument is going to be, and we will need some figures to explain why the CAFR is as it is. I think you know the conversation we're going to have, we've had it before with Matt and I, so let's be prepared with some facts to explain how that works.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Dr. Krupp?
Nothing.
Dr. Murray? Nothing from me. Dr. Bingley?
Along the same lines, on Wednesday of last week, before I went out of town, as you know, happy birthday, Mom, I don't think she's watching, in Ohio, I made a brief present, well, a presentation to the EDC Board of Directors, which is, was over 100 of, obviously, some of the most influential governmental and private sector leaders in our community. And I shared that I was, you know, I had about 15 minutes, and I was going to spend about three minutes to, the title of my presentation was Challenges: Achievements in the Future. So, I said I'm a kind of a half-glass-full guy, and so, I spent three minutes on challenge, and they're significant, you know, related to our capital issues and the bar graph you just have seen. But then I spent 12 minutes talking about some of the achievement that we've had in the face of, losing 11% of our staff, $143 million revenue in five years, free and reduced lunch percentage, it goes up 63%. I wanted, I want to be proud of Brevard Public Schools, but more importantly, I wanted them to know and be able to be versed in how much we support the economic development efforts that occur. And so, I shared with them, yes, it's wonderful that in our value-added model, we're in the top quartile in the state. Our kids on FCAT perform much higher than they would be predicted to perform based on that formula, and based on a comparison of like students in the state. That's what VAM does. But we're about way more than that, and I shared with them some of the data that you already know, how from '09 to '13, we have dramatic increases in the numbers of IB, AP, Cambridge. Success rate higher than they were in 2009. Dual enrollment, highest in the state. Double what we should have in all-state music. And how these things are very important when we speak to business leaders who are looking to potentially relocate our robotics, our science research, how these opportunities continue to exist here, and how our kids, our kids' SAT scores way above the national average, more than they were in 2008, through all of this challenge. And we don't play games. When we were involved in economic development with one particular company, there was a competitor city, and they had better ACT results, but you dug down in there and you realized only 198 kids took the test. We had 5,098, and demonstrated performance better than the state average by quite a bit. All of those rigorous curricula outperformed the... All of those rigorous curricula outperformed the global averages, and we make every student take the test. Just because it isn't going well for Jimmy, other people say, "Jimmy, maybe sit out the AP Lit test." No, Jimmy, in Brevard, you take it because we want to know that we're delivering these content. Our industry certification, highest ever in both participation and achievement last year, with very meaningful credentials that put young people ready to work. So it was a positive, I think, presentation. We received a lot of good feedback from some of the folks in the EDC Industry, or EDC Board of Directors, that they were appreciative of those data, and they're going to be used in upcoming materials that our EDC does use as we continue to try to develop and bring businesses into this area. So I was very proud of that presentation and what we were able to give them.
Thank you, Dr. Bingley. I think that's, I think we're done, right? Okay. And with that, we are adjourned.